That's great. I would like to then call along my Housing Authority meeting to order.
Did you have the script?
Oh, there it is. I wrote before you had these out.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call along my Housing Authority Board of Commissioners regular meeting to order. It's February 18, 2025. Maybe everyone called, please, I'll start. Commissioner Chair Pep. Commissioner Poplin.
Oh, sorry, yes, Commissioner Poplin.
Commissioner Chris.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Molly O'Donnell, Housing Director. Assistant 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 Attorney.
Harold Dominguez, Interim Executive Director.
Chairman McCoy.
Lauren Sally, Assistant Director for LHA.
Sarah, Public Safety and Interim Chief.
Commissioner Yarrow is here, as well as Commissioner Hidalgo Ferrey. They will be in a second. Should we wait for him or should... Here, Commissioner.
So, Sandra, wait. Big block. So, Susie, I do think. Don't go into the corner.
We just went through them. Yes, we got them.
Do you want to... We did roll call. Say your name and... Commissioner Yarrow. Has that come along? Oh, there she is. You want to add your name to the roll call?
Yes, Susie Yarrow Ferrey.
Commissioner. Commissioner. Okay. Do we have any agenda revisions?
Not an agenda revision, but just as a reminder, you got a replacement voucher report when the packet went out last Wednesday.
Yes.
So, that is in your hard copy papers here.
Okay, great. No documents submitted.
No.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the January 7, 2025 minutes?
I move to approve January 7, 2025 minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Chris, to approve January 7, 2025 minutes. All those... Is there any discussion about the minutes? Corrections? No. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. So, that package unanimously published and invited to be heard. I do not see any public here. So, we will close, open and close the public invited to be heard portion. We're now at the over new business. The first one is the public hearing on proposed changes to the HCV administrative plan. So, turn that over tomorrow.
So, we're holding the public hearing tonight because we did a 45-day public notice, and it was posted that tonight would be the public hearing night. We are actually extending public notice period, and you'll be considering the administrative plan changes next meeting, March 18. But since we posted the public hearing, we wanted to make sure we fill it in case anyone came.
So, there is no one on the public hearing for the changes on the HCV administration. So, let's move to Resolution LHA 2025-02 to adopt the 2024 CMAP certification.
I'm taking this one. So, the CMAP certification is something that we have to do for the voucher program. It's kind of a self-certification management where we have 14 areas that we have to test. We test a certain number of files to see if they pass that test, and then we kind of give ourselves a score. Then you guys sign that, and we send it off to HUD, and then HUD kind of does their analysis on that side because they have a system called PIC that kind of gathers some of the information, and they'll either approve it or they'll come back with questions. And so, this year, our possible points for the 14 was 130, and LHA scored 130. So, all the files that we tested passed.
Great. So, Commissioner Poplin.
Just a couple of clarifications on the scoring then. I noticed in some of the indicators, so indicator three, 12, and 13, they have like a split valuation. Are you able to just clarify why like some say 10 and 5, or 20 and 15?
Clarify that because I'm covering for Tracy, and I don't know why it has a split.
Like, I see that LHA still gets the full points, but I'm just curious why there's a split distinction there? And there's no split in the total.
I can definitely follow up without a answer to that question. And email us. Yep.
Great.
Thank you. Hopefully, it's helpful.
And I love.
Yeah.
So, I noticed it says 461 units in nine properties, but if you're saying like 20, add two out of each property.
So, that's... It's not our properties, it's the HCV vouchers. So, the HCV vouchers are... We have about 410 right now?
Well, I'm looking at the intergovernment agreement, it says 513.
That's what we can go up to. So, HUD allows us a certain ACC number. So, our ACC number is 513. So, we could do a total of 513 vouchers, but we also have a budget. And so, we can't go up to that level because of our fair market rents. And so, there's kind of a balancing act. Like, right now, we're at 410 to be within budget, and we're kind of in a shortfall at that. So, they give you a limit voucher that you can release, but we have to base that on what money they give us, and we can go up to that.
You guys weigh 410.
Yeah, right now, we're at about 410.
The 513 is not to exceed, and that number was set many, many years ago when the budget amount that HUD gave you couldn't allow you to do 513. But as they adjust fair market rents, and you're looking at project-based vouchers, they have to give you more money. And if they don't give you more money, then it basically is shrinking the order of vouchers that you actually have.
Well, 410, you've tested 20, that's not very high percentage. Or 5%.
Yeah. I mean, that's usually kind of odd-wise what they test as well. So, that follows pretty much kind of the standard to test every single file. Because you may have 410 vouchers, but throughout the program, you may have actually had 510 households.
And so, this is a randomized test?
Yeah, it's a randomized calculator that she selects a random sample of testing and then tests those files.
Yeah, okay. So, then, one other question I have. Indicator seven, not at that level.
Span... Spanning housing.
Yeah, without looking at the details of that, I would assume we can't really expand housing opportunities because we are at a limit and a budget limit for that. I wish Tracy was here because she probably knows these, the detail. There's a specific voucher program, but program has an opportunity under that.
So, spanning housing opportunities applies only to PHAs with the jurisdiction of metropolitan FMR.
What was the last part of jurisdiction?
Metropolitan FMR areas, which is just a high qualification for that jurisdiction. So, I think it's probably like, are you Denver?
Urban area.
Ah, yeah. And so, you just check a box then.
So, we don't... We don't want qualifications.
If you go on the scoring machine, you can see our checkboxes there. It actually gives you more detail of each qualification under the performance indicators. So, our score is above, but then it's just a yes/no checkboxes.
It's in the certification form itself.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm impressed at the ratings. More than chasing you around. So, you need a direction to either approve this resolution and authorize a senior. Does somebody want to make that motion?
I move that we... Follow that... Pass this resolution. And what was the second part, Mayor?
That's it. That's fine.
Resolution, LHA 2025-2.
Second. Been moved by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Yarrow, that we approve this CMAP. Is that what it's called? Yeah, resolution. Was there any discussion? Seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I just want to say that this is really, really good.
Yes.
The reason why? Because this is random, so that means you have to have all your stuff together in order for you to get high rating. And that means everything has to be in order unless you just got lucky and the files that they chose were in top shape.
Yeah.
And that is not how that works. I know, because I've been through it myself. And to get this high rating like this, you all have done amazing, amazing work. And I just, me myself, who've been property manager for HUD myself, I'm so proud of you all. This makes me very proud of, you know, all the things that you all are doing. And me... Y'all don't know, I'm just saying, I know. So, I'm very proud of you all, so, thank you.
That's far as...
Yes.
Ditto.
Well, what I would say on some of this, you know, like to Tim's point, we don't control what we do, this is determined by HUD. But when they talk about PHA, it needs a reexamination for each participating family at least every 12 months. What comes along with that on the backside of it is when they find families that aren't meeting in accordance. And then having to have the hard conversation with those families and talking about, do we continue the voucher? Do we not continue the voucher? Do we have repayment options? And so, many of these processes have following procedures that creates really tough conversation with Tracy and me. Which have been part... Per your direction, and part of all of us in terms of making arrangements.
I did get information on the split scoring. So, you are allotted 20 points if you're at like 98% of the sample control. So, if you score at 98% or higher, you get the full 20 points. If you score below 98 to 96, you get 15. So, you get some credit. It's like when you get credit for showing your work on the math test. So, you get some credit, and then if it's lower than that, you don't get the points. So, that's the reasoning for the split board, like those sections.
Great.
And then for everyone to remind him on this, this is just one piece of work that we do to evaluate it. They have investor audits, litigant audits, HUD audits.
State audits.
State audits. Our auditors come in and audit. So, this is only one of many that we have.
So, we did vote on that and it passed unanimously, so, just for the record. We're now on Resolution LHA 2025-03. This is an approval of interim agreement agreement of the City of Longmont for 2025 support of services.
This one? Okay. So, this is one that you see every year. This one actually has the fewest changes that you've seen yet from 2024 to 2025. Really, what we did is we just slightly modified the supportive services model that's carried out by our clinicians, just to make sure that it reflects our plans to... We have currently two clinicians that are city physicians that the city pays for that are operating out of the suites. And we have one clinician, one, that we budgeted out of LHA and been trying to fill and have not been successful in finding a candidate. So, we are upping it to a clinician two with a split primarily paid for by LHA and a small amount paid for by the city to make sure that we have success at filling clinician twos, and the twos that we got are wonderful. And so, that will really increase the service level at the suites and free up a little bit of time for them to do more city work as well. And then the other major changes are really just updates to our Development Management Services section to update the latest status of the projects and what we're going to be working on in 2025.
So, Molly, I think this is where I marked that the numbers were different. 461 units of nine properties, but then this final say 517. Not just the Zinnia units.
That is me with Zinnia on top of there. Right. So... Right. Which those just came on in late 2024. These are the properties that LHA owns and our voucher program. So, we don't own Zinnia, but we do manage Zinnia. And none of the services, well, other than our, like our administrative work, like Lauren and Harold and I that pop in and help on management issues at Zinnia, but we don't actually fund any property management-specific positions at Zinnia outside of that specific budget. So, that might have been just something we need to update in our whereas clauses, now that those are onboard. But in case it is, talking about ownership, it's just a management. So, that is...
So, do you think the resolution is correct or the IGA?
The IGA is correct in terms of the ones that we manage. 517 in ten properties.
Okay, is there any discussion on this resolution?
Yeah, two questions.
Sure.
Yeah, forgive me, I'm new to all this. This might be a very straightforward question. The financial obligations. I'm just curious from like an administrative standpoint. Like, I get that LHA and the city are separate entities here. How from an efficiency of administration do all these kind of transfers back and forth come through? Is this a lot back and forth administratively? Is it kind of two systems that talk to each other very well?
No.
Any clarification on kind of how this like financial transfer works?
Yeah. So, for the positions itself, they are budgeted. We all use the same unit software to record our time and get paid. Each individual is budgeted specifically. So, the city has specific account codes that are designated for LHA, and then their accounting team has to invoice LHA because we have a completely separate financial system, and then we pay back the city. So, that's how it kind of works. So, we built the IGA. We originally had the IGA with amounts in it, but every year that changes. You know, you could have, somebody had different benefits, so we all... We more segregated to say, based on the approved budget for those positions.
So, here's what this... This is what this really looks like. This is the LHA org chart and what it takes to make LHA function with the co-benefits that the city and the LHA have found from operating together. This looks like crazy-making, and this is really what that IGA actually talks, like outlines. So, I mean, it keeps going. So, here's our City of Longmont-funded positions, our joint-funded, our pure LHA-funded, the city position that LHA funded, and then, sorry, I can't see that far. City Council Services. Oh, that's our specialties over here. So, this is what it takes to make LHA happen. And we... And when you're operating just face-to-face, it doesn't seem that crazy until you look at it on paper, so...
Well, part of it is, so, when you look at this, when you look at the administrative piece, from a budgeting standpoint, it's pretty straightforward. So, we look at the dollar amounts, and that's what we need to do. Now, when you get into the housing authority area and you start looking at the costs that are allocated to the property, it gets more complicated because you have to allocate the actual cost to the property. So, when we look at snow removal, for example, it was even worse than just now because when you had contractor services, you had to bill hours with the contractor at each individual property. We restructured snow removal to say, here's a fixed cost. And it's a fixed cost allocated to each property, but you can't... You just have to go through that with each individual property because each individual property is its own corporation.
Because they're separately going to choose.
Yes.
Okay. And so, the staff, it's called sharing, maybe that's not the right legal term here, is actually an operational efficiency to some degree between the two organizations.
Correct.
Even though there's some other internal administrative and financial transfers to kind of make them dot all the i's across all the teams here.
Yeah, to kind of go back a little bit. So, when they went to the city council and we started this, we went through several evolutions. One was I was the executive board member that had operational control. But I was on the board. We then went to the city council's board. I'm the interim executive director. But what was driving all of this is when you looked at the operational cost of just running a housing authority. They were paying 250 to 275 for an executive director. They were paying 100 to 125,000 for a chief financial officer. And they couldn't afford to fund any other positions. They were literally going bankrupt based on what we were seeing. So, what's happened is...
So, there's about 400K right there between these two positions.
Yeah.
For senior level.
Right. So, when we did this agreement, initially, it was a savings of about 275,000 or so. We haven't calculated that because we don't benchmark the executive director. But what we've been able to do is to actually take those dollars and push it to its lowest level of the organization. So, now we have... We're able to compensate property managers appropriately, hire assistant managers, have an adequate number of maintenance personnel, which they didn't have, and then actually add an assistant director and other components to where we're able to do more than we've ever done. And we really, we have revenue growth through development projects. But it's not incredibly efficient, but I think Kindred has this as efficient as it can be, understanding the structures because everything's segregated.
Right. Because you, Sandy, Jim, Zach, Joni, all kind of cover some of the responsibilities.
Primarily, it's Molly, but they have people within their groups that assist the housing authority.
Done. How long have you been interim executive director?
Four years.
Okay, thank you. That's super helpful. I have one other question on efficiencies of a different degree, which is, I was looking at, let's see, this is section three. So, this Article 1, Section 3, I have to read the page number of the packet. Article 1, Section 3, subsection... No, hold on, I lied. Article 1, Section 2, Subsection D, or page 22 of the packet in the PDF. In the middle of this says, "The city shall assist in creating a residential turnover plan and checklist to ensure the residents have a safe, clean, functional place to live, including upgrading each unit to the latest standards for fixtures, equipment, keys, and hardware." Just curious, since we're talking about all of this resource sharing, the city also partners with PRPA, Partner Power Authority, on the Efficiency Works Program. I'm just curious, like during that with turnovers, I don't know the exact process for how you do like efficiency upgrades that could help support a safe and functional place, living standards. Has there been coordination with the Efficiency Works Program to some of those types of upgrades too?
Yep. And then on LPC's program side, actually, one of our prior housing, city housing side staff went over to run the LPC side of efficiency work. So, we've been, we already have that connection anyway, plus we're all city. So, we absolutely have tapped into that. We did all of our, remind me, it's all of at Briarwood. The PTAC units at Briarwood did an upgrade on that.
Sorry, PTAC units.
It's part of the HVAC system.
Yeah.
We did upraise that as a pilot project in partnership with LPC just to get, just to test out their, one of their newer programs. So, we definitely have connections there.
Even to the point when we did the recindication of Village of May and the burden of LPC in terms of the rooftop solar, and then sent over, we received money from the county and are partnering with LPC in terms of rooftop solar. But it's the only way to do it on affordable housing projects because when you go in through the litigant program, the margins are so slim that we tried it once, and we, I mean, you literally ran into a problem with that issue. We thought we had enough to do it on Aspen Meadows Senior, but we ran into a problem with that issue and it killed the budget. So, it requires partnerships in order to fund those types of programs.
Easy data readily available on like the number of like units or whatever, kind of PTAC evaluations.
I can try and pull what we have.
Don't spend as much time as it's readily...
Sure. I know we have the Briarwood program specifically. And then at our other properties, a lot of the upgrades come with a major rehabilitation. So, Aspen Meadows Senior, Village of May, and our new builds. And then without that, though, it's kind of an incremental funding partnership. But we can try and pull the data as we can.
Cool. That's all it means to define, we appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, it's all right.
Okay. Can we have direction now on LHA 2025-03? Do we have a motion?
Do we... Should we modify the resolution?
Oh, you can modify it.
Is that a possibility?
There's a discrepancy between the...
Just the number of units managed on the resolution versus the IGA.
Maybe it's non-functional language.
It's not... It's non-substantial, so...
I don't want to have any errors there.
Can we just make, mention a matter of amendment to the resolution or as of...
Can we both amend it?
You can amend the resolution by motion and then vote on the amended resolution. So, just to pick it back.
So, I move that we amend this, I guess, the second clause. Of the multi-family rental portfolios of 461 units of nine properties to 517?
Yes.
Units on 10 properties.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hidalgo Ferrey that we amend the resolution 2025-03 from 461 to 517. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Chris. Is there any more discussion on this?
So, now, let's vote all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So, that amended, amended passed. Now, we need to vote on the amended resolution, LHA 2025-03 as amended.
So, I'll move resolution, LHA 2025-03 as amended. Second.
Been moved by Council, no, Commissioner Hidalgo Ferrey, seconded by Commissioner Chris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And that also passes.
Just a little chart.
We're in our next...
And I think when we do a briefing with you two, we'll have it all.
Oh, okay.
Great. We're in the 2024 LHA accomplishments and the goals for 2025.
Sure. So, you have a giant spreadsheet in your packet.
Yes.
I pulled it up up here. It's still too small, but I can zoom in if we need to on specific areas.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. So, history on these. These were the goals that the LHA board created back in 2022. And we've been operating and doing this report out ever since. I think that what you'll find overall is we've made a ton of headway on most of these. Some of them we did have to change direction on. But overall, there's not that much left to continue into 2025 in terms of the very specific things that we included here. These are pretty granular because at the time, we were trying to stabilize LHA, change culture. It was very, these are really pointed. So, I think that maybe after this year, we might, we might have this filled out and kind of maxed out. So, I would leave that up to the board to decide if they'd like to target a broader process further in the future. But I think for 2025, we're going to report out what we plan to do that is in line with these goals for 2022.
So, I haven't read all of the 2025 goals, unfortunately. I should have read one. But what I don't see, and correct me if I'm wrong, is... You had asked us, Harold, at one point, what other, the land that is by Zinnia that you co, we co-own with the Zinnia developer? What do we want to do with that? What do we want to do with that? Does it continue to be developer?
It's Xenia developer, they had a purchase option upon that land. I have to look at the status of that purchase option.
It's still in effect.
It's in effect, but they're not really a functional way.
But they needed to apply for LI-Tech funding by now, so if it, conversations continue, it probably need to be looked at and extended at a minute. So we have not moved forward on that so far. It's still there, it's still city and LHA owned. We have not pushed forward so far on what to do there. I think because they have that option, it's kind of their, the onus is on them to come to us to start saying, "We're ready." I think what they're trying to do right now, actually, I know, they need Xenia to settle and see how the Xenia suites, how the whole campus structure is functioning and really getting it solid.
So my concern really is that we have four positions up for election on council next year in November. I don't know, well, none of us know how that's gonna turn out and what they're going to do or think about LHA and the funding, et cetera. If there's anything that we can do to get this property started, so that hopefully it can't be undone moving forward. I don't know what that would involve. I would like you to look at that. We gave you some, some ideas of what we, which I, I found astounding that you even asked because all my time on council, we were never asked, "What do you want to do with these lands? What do you want to do with..." So I was very humbled that you would even say, "Where do you want to go?"
Yeah, I think to Molly's point about assessing how that whole campus is working right now is we're, we've been, we've been a critical mass on that in the sense of some of the issues that were still associated with Xenia. And we'll talk about that in the operational order. There's some challenges that we're working through right now. It's similar to the challenges that we experienced at the suites when we had to deal with the suites. And we had to work with the state over the course of about two years, but you know, a few things we had to be really focused on rules, help holding people accountable on those types of things. Xenia is slightly different in terms of, we got on it, there are certain requirements with the state that are coming into play. And so we're partnering with them right now in terms of having a conversation with the state and what we can do. That actually ties to the next item that we're gonna talk to you all about.
And generally, it takes time to build a community when you have fifty-five people coming in all at once. It's taken us years to get suites to where it is today. So we're working on community building is a big thing right now.
I just wanted to play that video up.
Yeah, last, was it last week? Before last.
Last Friday. When I was gone?
Yeah, when you were gone.
Yeah, that was the beginning of the year.
So we had an issue where we had an individual that had assaulted people in the past. Lauren got the call that someone had a gun, hit someone else over the head with a gun. And so we, Quincy, who's the regional property manager, Quincy and I ran out, had Lauren there. Fortunately, they did a great job at handling that issue. But at the same time, we had another issue blow up where someone was running through the parking lot, half closed, it was like forty degrees. Trying to get into suites, trying to get into Xenia. It's an individual that we know has been, they're sneaking them in to Xenia. And so we had about an hour and a half of complete chaos. And then we had to do all the trespassing. That's really kind of what we're talking about, but definitely we'll look at it and see what we can do in terms of options and then how we look at that in the future. I think we've talked about it, and Allroads has also said this, is at one point you have enough of a congregation that you want to do something different. We've even talked about if we do it, maybe we do ground floor commercial where we have office space for support organizations that can office in the area and then do housing above it. That way we bring more resources to the location that can also help. So we've been exploring some options, but yeah, it's definitely been incredible.
Is there any other specific questions or should I can do a paraphrase of each block?
I have a couple of things I want to talk about. So one of the goals is increasing access to rental assistance for Longmont households with water and gas. And we talked about the voucher, increasing the voucher ten percent year over year. Obviously, these were aspirational goals. And we have had increase in voucher funding. I would say that I think probably my biggest concern probably over the next four years is really what HUD funding is going to look like related to vouchers. Because, I mean, if you look at the reports recently, I know that we're cutting a lot of HUD staff.
The city side HUD rep today, we don't know how, but it's hitting us directly.
Yeah, so they're, they're, well, I'm sure people are projecting into a job they can get. But so there's a lot of uncertainty there. We talked to you all about back about moving in when we were in shortfall. And that was because of the way HUD set the rental rates that drove it up prematurely. We actually went through the process, we ended up not being in shortfall, but we were close by twenty, what was it, Kendra? Twenty thousand or so?
It was about forty thousand, but at the end of the year, we were not in shortfall.
We were not in shortfall, so we're able to manage vouchers.
But we're projected to be in twenty twenty-five.
And up until this point, that's really been the only way organizations have received increased funding. So in talking to some of our HUD reps, it's not uncommon for housing authorities to intentionally manage to shortfall because that's how you get more money. My comment to him is why would you do that with the uncertainty of the federal budget? Because you're subject to annual allocations, so we don't do that. And so some
Sorry, can you explain the differences in those two processes in return?
So you, they give you a allotted amount of money and you have to have a four percent reserve, four and a half percent reserve?
Yeah, it was two to four.
Two to four percent reserve, so you need to be in that sweet spot. A lot of housing authorities will actually spin into shortfall, which means historically they had more money they had to pay than what was allocated by the federal government. So you then go into a shortfall process and they go, "Okay, you're in shortfall, we're gonna give you this extra money." Once you go into shortfall and you get the extra money, you keep it year over year over year.
And then everything with voucher goes down.
Yeah, so we don't manage it that way because there's inherent risk of what we're dealing with today. And so what we've been doing to manage it when Kendra's projecting a shortfall is we do not, we hold vouchers back. So instead of reissuing the voucher, we'll hold the voucher, voucher, and we're managing our shortfall real time. So we have a two-year tool. Every day, the two-year tool goes out one day further in time and we're constantly managing vouchers based on the number of units.
Gives a little bit more percussion to managers.
Yeah, so this is going to be, I think, an issue, just to let you all know in terms of what the funding looks like in getting additional vouchers. I am not optimistic at this point, there's gonna be more funding going into HUD to give vouchers.
How much do we currently get from HUD approximately?
It's on the voucher report. It's like six, hold on, I have that on.
Like what's our risk exposure?
We had six point nine million and we
In twenty twenty-four?
In twenty twenty-four. And that is the, that includes the reserve amount that they hold for us. So you don't want to go over the six point nine. We were twenty-four thousand short, that was not short.
Shy.
Shy.
Which is, if I'm understanding this correctly, which is good, that we went very close but didn't exceed.
Correct.
Correct, so we're managing that number, she's managing it daily, not weekly.
Well, and I think HUD also realized, they made a rule in a calculation. So when they increased the fair market rent, they went too high. And it caused all, not just us, it caused a lot of housing authorities to go in shortfall. Because now you're allowing every single one of those vouchers to go up to that fair market rent. And if they raised it three hundred per unit per month, I talked to my HUD rep and there were agencies that were ten million dollars in shortfall. Because they have so much money, but that just put them way over the edge. And so in twenty twenty-five, they reduced their fair market. So they, I've never seen that happen, it's always went up. But twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, they went up, then twenty twenty-five, they're going back down.
Compared to twenty-three, how much more did we get?
Normally, you see like, well, specifically
We did get a small amount, but the fair market rents aren't directly tied to the amount of money that you get.
Sure.
It's more, so you've got X number of dollars with an increase in the last year, which is went twenty-three to twenty-four. And then based on the rents in your area, you can accommodate X number of vouchers.
Nice.
So it's always this balancing act of making sure we've got it, threading the needle just right to maximize the number of vouchers we can put out, but also stay under
So the number of vouchers is not the number that HUD gives you. Number of vouchers is a function of how much the fair market value rent is
In New York area.
And how much money you get from HUD.
Yes, so how many ways can you divide it?
It's a divisionary.
So that, what that means though is six point nine million dollars of rental assistance came from HUD to Longmont in twenty twenty-four. Of course, our voucher holders are not only in Longmont, but but many are either from other housing authorities, so maybe the number is about right.
In twenty twenty-three, we had six point two. So they gave us a really good cushion. But with the fair market increase, it swallowed that up. I mean, we didn't get to add vouchers, we had to reduce our voucher count, that's it.
That's the whole not to exceed the five number versus we're at four-ten. And I just think we need to brace ourselves that it could be a three-nine.
If there were cuts?
Yes.
To the amount of funding that's given, even if the fair market rent value doesn't change?
Yeah.
And that's why there would be a cut.
I mean, there's, yeah, there's so many different variables in that.
Sure. So then if you go into shortfall and HUD doesn't backfill the shortfall, then you have to make real decisions. Like do you
So then we have to what?
If you, if you go into shortfall and HUD doesn't backfill the shortfall, then you have to make hard decisions about are we gonna make voucher holders make up the difference? And a lot of them can't. Are we gonna kick people off of the program? If I recall correctly, I had to
Yeah, oldest, oldest people on program are the ones that go first, that you have to give back the program. We have to stop porting in.
Oldest isn't had their voucher in the office, not the shirt, not the
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and there's stipulations, like you can't, you can't do elderly, you can't do families with children. I mean, so those are kind of exempt from the rule, but they do have specific waterfall of how you have to work.
And when you go, when you go in this shortfall process and they're talking to you, they're asking you those questions. What have you done? How have you done this? We actually, we're probably, if we got in a shortfall, I think we would want to give some money this year. Because all of the questions, you know, what have you been doing to manage your voucher account? What have you been holding them? Have you been reissuing vouchers? Well, they want me to give them that answer. So there's, there's trigger points.
But we're not porting in anyway, right?
We have, we're not, we're not absorbing our porters, so we do have
What is ported?
So ported is when somebody comes from another housing authority, like in California or Michigan, and they come to Longmont, they get to keep their voucher and they port into our agency. We have the opportunity to absorb it, which means it becomes part of our voucher count. Or we don't absorb it and we still administer it, but we get less of an administrative fee and we can't absorb them. And it's a lot more, technically, it's backwards, you should get more administrative when you're doing a porting because there's more to it. So we, right now, I think we're at like fourteen different, fourteen porters. And we try to absorb them when we can, but that's something that's stopped us from doing because we're in shortfall.
If it's not already obvious, the voucher program is one of the most heavily regulated, complex, checks and balances, report, performance reporting, it's heavily, heavily managed. And that's our job to thread that needle to.
Were there anything on the new focus areas in twenty twenty-five that you wanted to highlight or?
I think overall, what we're looking to do in twenty twenty-five that plays into a couple of locations in here is really get, we did a lot of staff capacity increasing and getting everything on the staffing side stabilized last year. That this year, we are pretty much full-staffed up. We do have, there's always changes coming with property management right now. But generally, in terms of our capacity compared to prior years, what we really want to do in twenty twenty-five is look at some of our internal processes, come up with established policies to make sure everybody's doing the same thing, the same way, they all have the same resource catalog to pull from. We really just want to strengthen up our standard operating procedures and look inward and get everything really solid and we have time to do that now, well
That's good.
That's the idea with the staff capacity. But that is a big goal for twenty twenty-five is just getting our internal house really, I mean, it's in order, but getting it really highly efficient, so. And then there's updates here to our development that you'll see. One thing that you'll see on here in the very last page in red is some new things that we, I haven't added on anything in any prior years, but this is really, I think it already fits within the intent of this goal, but it's adding some strategies about it. Considering incorporating mixed income development and property management into our portfolio to provide opportunities for residents to advance through the housing spectrum and diversify LHA's revenue streams. So that's something that we added on there, so that would be something for y'all to consider.
So here's the lie behind this. We've, you know, obviously looked at a project that was in the middle income housing world and we were trying to make it fit. And it's kind of hard, like so far down the road, to make it fit. But what is clear to us is that, or what's clear to me at least, is staying in where you're only doing purely affordable housing doesn't generate the revenue you need to really propel the organization forward. So what some housing authorities do, Bolder knows some of this too, is that they will build an affordable housing project, but also potentially include some market rate units or attainable units. And what that does is, is that lets you manage your performance in a way where you can generate more income over time. And in looking at this, what that does is then you can structure the developer fees and you can structure the cash flow to where it's building over time. So then you can get equity building, then whatever it is, whatever type of structure you're gonna build. So you're generating equity in that structure, you're generating developer fees, you're generating increased revenue because if you bring in different levels, then your rent structure is gonna be a little bit different. And so what that does is that stabilizes the cash flow over time. And so what, what we're saying in this is that we probably, I think the next project, and we have some ideas on this, needs to be, and it's true in case of housing.
Right.
And that's the other piece of this, but the next project needs to be a project that has affordable units, has attainable units. And when I say attainable, income restricted attainable, and then potentially non-income restricted attainable. That the market, that functions more like a market rate. So that you're diversifying your portfolio in that, in that structure so that you're creating pressure relief valves over time as you're bringing revenue in and you're getting cash flow out of those properties because when you get into the budgets on this, what you'll see is a cash flow on traditional affordable LI-Tech properties is always going to slip. We can't continue doing that. And the only way we're gonna increase funding Um, and the only way we're going to increase fund balance and other revenue streams is through developer fees. And at some point, that's going to end because you have space to build those types of things. So if council or the board agrees with this, um, we think there's an opportunity coming soon where between the affordable housing fund, we can look at being intentional about creating, um, really a mixed use development with potentially ground floor, commercial, affordable housing units, attainable housing units, non-income restricted attainable housing units that I think has the potential to diversify the portfolio. And the project we're looking at.
With the goal of being more self-sustaining over time.
Self-sustaining over time, where we actually control our destiny versus letting state, federal government control our destiny on some of these things. The pro forma that we were looking at worked, but the things that we needed to do just to make the gap grow and grow. We think if we're intentional and we focus on it on the front end, we could probably come together with something now. What that'll tell is a financing model that LHA issues a debt. LHA would have to go to the city and look at a law obligation, which means if for some reasons they can't pay for it, the city's saying, they're back here. What that does is it fights the interest rate down in terms of the debt that you're issuing. And then we have to structure, you know, all of these backstops to make sure that the, uh, moral law is never counted on until you get to, um, stability.
What about the land costs though? Um, is that going to be a partnership with, with an organization that will give us land at a value that is less than market?
So theoretically, um.
Or do they own the land?
We may have land now, but the, the housing, the affordable housing fund owns some land that we. And I want to be high level. We may need an executive session on this because I don't want to. So what we know, you can bring up that area over here. So what we know is when we had the flood, the stormwater fund bought some of this property. We then used ARPA funds to buy this property. Um, but when we're looking at the development of the first and main transit station, um, in order to, based on what you all talked about earlier with rail and some of the other things, we need to really speed up, help with dealing with, with, we've got some stormwater water quality issues. And the most efficient way to deal with them is actually to do some type of water quality stormwater retention facility on the property with the affordable housing fund guys. I want to trade it for this. And then if, that's all internal, so there's no cost associated with it. Obviously, we'd like to look at acquiring additional property. But to me, this then starts fitting into the scheme vision that we have, where you have height that you can deal with. Uh, you have commercial opportunities that you can deal with because it's on Main Street. And so generally, that's what we're talking about. The thing you really look at when you're talking about rental units, I think that's well positioned geographically for a large number of rental units. It's not adjacent to any neighborhoods. Uh, and it fits in with all of your plans that you have with your other head on it in terms of scheme, system name, revision. Uh, but I think it does have the potential to, to drive additional revenue streams for the housing.
So that the Boston parcel is in a qualified census tract where the Royal Maple Home parcel is not. So that has some value in it if you're talking about trying to do li tech there. That helps if you're trying to bring in, um, either some commercial that is public, um, what did I think of? Public some? Yes, but it's basically like a public benefit commercial space, then we could include that in the basis of the tax credits, which is also really valuable. So there's some, um, efficiencies to that.
And how it keeps.
I miss your heart rates.
So is there some sort of like percentage ceiling when it comes to a mixed income underneath the housing authority?
Not really.
So you could build a ton of market rate apartments underneath the housing authorities and still be granted a property tax exemption?
No, it wouldn't. So see, that's the key. So then the, the front, that's the other value to this. So over here, when you look at the fact that one of the challenges we had with the urban renewal authority is that if you did something here, it's almost fully taxed exempt, which means that you're not driving any implement into the tax base. You would have like the commercial would be taxable, affordable wouldn't be taxable, attainable, it's income restricted wouldn't be. The other piece is probably would be taxable. So you actually would generate some tax revenue from the property because typically with, with the affordable voucher. So you're right. It's, it would be, and that impacts the debt too, because then you'll have non-taxable and you could potentially have taxable debt that you have to balance as well.
So is the strategy here kind of twofold? It'll have the retention space on the left, the left side of Main. Swap that for the housing to get the li tech credit and then the retention space, this retention area frees up for the urban renewal area, more concentrated development north of that.
Yeah.
And so you're able to claim tax increment benefit there.
Potentially.
Potentially, while if, and the li tech benefit on the east side.
Yeah.
So the housing authority, and I think I already understand this answer, does not build for sale units. They all have to be rental? Even if they're restricted?
They don't have to be. There are some housing authorities doing some for sale work.
Isn't true.
It is.
It's the same, it's the same people. Sorry.
Right. So there are some housing authorities doing homeownership on, in our sense, we have the city side and the housing authority side working side by side anyway. So the homeownership has been concentrated there, but, um, it is all the same people.
Well, because when you said mixed, but you need to generate revenue, I thought, why don't we put in that same development, some for sale units to generate revenue?
If we didn't have construction defects.
We can do the townhouse.
So like, like Austin actually does a really good job of this. So Austin, you'll see mix where they have ground floor commercial, they'll have a hotel, they'll have some homeownership in some of their structures. Um, but the reality is, is that creates a different liability that you have to deal with. So when you think about the cost of insurance on true north for fifty five to first fifty five, with six hundred thousand dollars in insurance, I think I told you all it's going to be two, around two point two, two point three total insurance cost. So that just balloons on a product like this because you're managing your exposure in townhomes and quadruplexes because it's only limited to what's connected.
Okay.
And so, yeah, obviously if we didn't have that, you could be a really creative and then say, okay, if we could get land use approval to say go to eight stories at this location, your top two could be a for sale product. And that helps then, then what you're doing, then your overall capital stack, and then you mix rental and then the ground floor commercial.
Okay.
But that's the challenge.
So you take a position.
So I was very excited when I saw this. I'm like, and I wondered if you had considered partnerships to share some of this building to where it's not all city owned property, but you have a component of the development.
Yeah, that's all part of how you look at it and what risk. And, and I think that's part of the evaluation is you go in and you, obviously there will be a partnership because is it a fee developer where you just pay them a fee to develop it and you have full ownership? Is it, you own, is it a fifty fifty ownership mix? Is it seventy thirty? We've got to start this from the ground up. And I think starting it from the ground up is easier than trying to take something that's already three quarters of the way. And then we're sitting there going, now we need at least twelve percent affordable housing in it, not this. Or we need seventeen to twenty percent affordable housing in it, and we need this. And when you start trying to do that on something that's already done, it becomes really hard, the economics just don't work. Where we tried, we had eight million dollars in the board and I trying to sort through some, some of these issues.
But as you work on these projects, you can move that direction.
Correct. You can, and those are options. And then it's just looking at the economics of it. How much revenue do you want to drive off of it? And it really is bringing, um, what you want to do is sort of have that quasi private sector mentality in this, but not compromise the values that you all have set forward in terms of quality of ownership. And, and it's dual.
Well, I'm enthused by that. This is an excellent idea and probably the next phase in who makes us self-sufficient in this one.
The other thing is, is if you can generate the equity off of it, in about seven years, you don't necessarily have to have a law of to issue debt on the next one because you can utilize the equity that you have at this one to secure that.
So Molly, you were.
Yeah, I think one more general comment is just noting how much we've done in this first goal that has a bunch of strategies here about culture building, communication with residents, really just putting a new face on LHA from what some of our existing residents had prior to twenty twenty. Uh, we brought in so many partner organizations this year. We brought in, um, to do educational activities at the properties. Kaiser, True Pace Cultivate, Next Light, Recovery Cafe, Center for People with Disabilities. DU came and did a permanent supportive housing research event, declutter events. We always do holiday and birthday events. Um, and then community manager organized resident appreciation events. And I think that that is some of what, since we've been talking about community building, some of the major things that we have really, um, turned LHA in the eyes of our residents into what we wanted it to be from twenty twenty two when we made this. So I think that's a good summary.
It's, it's taken a while. So thanks. So we don't need any direction on this. It was just information. Just leave some coffee.
Sorry, two, two more questions on this. One, or maybe my fellow commissioners here, has the city of Longmont ever taken a position on the construction defects law and has it, or sat down with our representatives to?
I thought I answered this during copy of council.
I didn't want to go deeper on this, but like have, have they like sat down with representatives to actually like walk through some of these very challenges where this, what are the tests that we have?
Yeah.
Every year.
Correct. That's what I'm trying to say. Legislation that's.
The bill has been dropped on construction.
It has, and that one, last year there were two bills that were dropped, one that seemed more reasonable and the one that wasn't. The one that dropped a quicker view is not great because it almost moves too far in the direction.
Okay, yeah.
And, and I think there's another one that we need dropped, but I haven't seen that one.
Not yet.
So the one that you said dropped, is that the one from Shannonburg?
Yeah.
Kurt Burr, Kurt Burr was in that one a little less.
Okay, because Shannonburg is one that was mentioned on Saturday.
So that might answer your question since.
They said that that one didn't drop yet.
Those requisitions.
Whoever that guy was.
What, what Sancho Rizzi?
Joe was one of them?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All right. And then my last question is entirely different from all of this, which is. Number six of the goals.
Yeah.
You mentioned the partnership, can you clarify more of the partnership with VIA for transportation care? Because isn't that the same service that the local ride? Now different VIA?
Different VIA.
Different VIA. Okay.
So this one is for, um, trips for seniors to grocery stores.
And this is a funded transportation service specific for seniors?
Seniors living in LHA properties.
At LHA properties.
And that is, isn't that the one that council?
Yeah.
Is this?
Because our TV funds the, of our.
Yeah, forgive my ignorance of this, and this is no, no slight to LHA here, but is that redundant with Longmont Ride?
No, no, no. It's really, I understand that, pardon, you know, participants sign up to go on Tuesday or whatever to.
To go to the grocery store.
Yeah.
So they're going.
So it's a non-perpetual time. It's a business.
Yes.
Oh, it's a, it's a higher capacity service.
It's a community housing.
An ABA outing, yes.
Okay, so this is serving a much different volume than, right, the couple on demand on Longmont Ride? Okay, just want to make sure that with that new addition that we're.
Yeah, they do it together. They have, sometimes they have like a volunteer, or when he's on the board, does a lot, helps him with it. It is something that we're watching, um, because we do know that many of our, where the older adults living on properties, we need them to consider utilizing the other VIA, Longmont Ride, um, for day to day activities. So I think tho, those are things we're going to be learning through data to understand what that really looks like. And if we see data shifts or we see fewer people riding the bus.
Yeah.
Because they are taking advantage of this, then we may come back and reexamine that.
Right. I understand. Cause is there any cost to use this VIA or?
Yes.
Not, not for.
For residents.
Not, not for the residents. There's costs to LHA.
Sure, I assume there's costs there. It's like a dollar for seniors to use the Longmont Ride.
We are funded through twenty twenty five at this point, so.
Twenty twenty six?
Twenty twenty six, twenty twenty eight.
The council gave, put in some council contingency funds into this, and then I think we try to work some of it into the LHA logic correct.
I thought we were on time with twenty twenty five. It's not in the LHA budget. It's with the LHDC.
LHDC, yeah.
And it's funded to twenty twenty six, I believe.
Yeah.
City contract with LHDC and LHDC. It's a, so I appreciate that you're kind of seeing, starting to be on the radar here, but like as that, as Longmont Ride data starts to come in and it starts to ramp that up, I'd be curious if there, I mean, and depending on the ridership of the other VIA, if, if there are opportunities to either scale one back to allow something to be more sustainable long term. Just, just what, what that kind of rearrangement optimization could be between the two services?
Yeah, there may be, there's some inherent mobility issues though. When we look at, uh, clients that we have in our, in the LHA units versus the other VIA because it doesn't pick you up at the door and take you to the door. And that's a big issue for the clients that we're serving here. So those are some of the nuances that.
So even if it's just a scaling down of one, like, like just to kind of figure out what the, like, it doesn't mean we just destroy one or eliminate one. It would be like, what's the optimal balance between the two services for people who do need those, for, who do need this VIA for mobility reasons?
Right.
And maybe camaraderie and whatever community purpose that's certain in there. And then anyone else who's able to use the other service, which is, yeah. Or if expanding the Longmont Ride in a few spaced areas for these types of properties could serve that function.
Yeah.
So worth looking at. We don't have enough data to make that decision yet, but just putting that on the radar. Unless supposed to oppose this, I'd love to motion for a five minute recess. Is that for a five minute break?
I've never done that before. I don't know. No, I'm nervous.
Is that, is that not kosher?
Just like breaking, yeah.
Just, oh, okay. That's fine.
You need a bio break. You're welcome to.
Yeah, you don't.
You have to take care of yourself.
Yeah. We don't need to do that.
We give you permission.
You give us.
Do you want us to make a motion to make? Would that make you happy?
I move. Yeah. Can we shoot a pumpkin?
Can that permission go to five minute break? Second.
I'm just going to walk out.
Is that the record show?
He has left the room.
I forgot to tell him this is a more relaxed.
Yeah, that's what it is. Yeah. That's what people are saying. That's true. That's true. We haven't had anyone like you like that.
No, no. He seems to be good with this.
Yeah.
Keep going. So we're going to go to marijuana tax revenues for housing support services.
Sure.
This is, uh, this is interesting. Go for it, Molly.
Okay. So currently marijuana tax revenues are split half and half between mental health focused work and half goes. and half goes into the Affordable Housing Fund to support unit generation. So in 2024, that for the half going to the Affordable Housing Fund was about $250,000. And because we've also, in about the same two to three-year period, we're getting fee and loo revenue now as well from the Inclusionary Housing Program. And we're going to be having a Prop 1V allocation that we think we would have money in hand, hopefully about third quarter of 2025. The revenue picture on that side is definitely different from what it was three years ago. Still not enough to solve all of our housing issues, but it's definitely different. But in those couple of years, something that we have learned lessons at the Suites and know that our clinicians model at the Suites is a golden ticket. We also know that supportive services specifically for those giving into permanent supportive housing, like the Suites, like Zenia or other models as well, is one of the hardest funding sources out there to find externally. So something that we have been talking about is since the ballot measure listed the purposes for the, the tax revenues would be, I should say, the resolution that council made allocating those funds specifically list the purposes of mental health supports and affordable housing. We thought taking a portion of that 250 that goes into the Affordable Housing Fund and doing instead a supportive services for housing set aside to kind of expand on some of the work that we've done at the Suites, take some of that into new directions. And we wanted to see what this group's thoughts were about that idea.
I think it's a great idea. I really do. We can't just house people. If we want them to get better and thrive and move on, we have got to have supportive services.
It's expensive.
And it's going to be hard getting those dollars from the county because they have to decide where they're going.
Yeah, so part of it is, what really spurred this conversation is Molly mentioned earlier that we were trying to hire clinician in one position. We just can't hire it for the skills we need. Who's going to hire? So they came to me and said, well, do we create a?
A, either a program specialist, like a downgrade?
And, and when we had the conversation from me, that didn't, it's like, okay, but we still need a clinician. And now we have bigger gaps to fill in order to do a clinician. And when we were looking at options, this really started showing itself. And what we know, so when we got into the Suites, and we really started digging into the challenges and what was really driving some of the issues at the Suites. At the time, the requirement that we have from the state was that we had to bring people in from the statewide system. We know that many of the most significant issues we had to deal with that was actually driving the creation of the clinicians and everything else was not from individuals that we were housing out of the Boulder County Collaboration, individuals that were coming out of this broader system. So we had a meeting with the state. And as part of that conversation, we were pretty open about the fact that we had to fund the three clinician positions, the two that you all agreed to fund from the city, the one that we did from the housing authority. And then what we're doing, Sarah's position. So we were able to articulate how much money we were having to put in locally to manage the situation that we had front of us. They then agreed to say, no, you don't need to bring people in from the statewide system. You can just bring them in from, through the Boulder County Collaboration. Same thing we're seeing. And so we, I'm confident that I think we need to have some time to build that argument with Zenia and kind of saying, here's what we need. We also have, I think, there's a flaw in the state system because when they were looking at supportive services long-term, they were, there was a Medicare component that they were counting on in terms of funding some of these supportive services. And Medicare is not coming through.
Oh, it isn't?
It's a state issue.
Medicaid reimbursed.
Medicare, Medicare.
But it's not. It was supposed to be, it was, the ship was getting built as Zenia was getting built. And the timing is not lining up.
And then, and then they were accounting on some federal legislation. And so one piece of legislation was passed, but it didn't do everything that it needed to do. And so there's some challenges in the Medicaid world in terms of that model. And so if we can do this, we can put it into support services, I think it starts sending us down the road again, making us a more argument on the other side about what we're having to do locally to ensure the success of the residents that we're housing absent state funding and some other issues. Because it's one thing to build a structure. You've got to have the ongoing operating cost to support the individuals that are in the structure. And I get that you put millions of dollars into this, but as we've learned, the building is the smallest piece of what we need to do to make sure people are successful.
Exactly.
So that's sort of the genesis of our breakfast.
Any other comments from commissioners?
So you're going to hear this again with your other hat on because the way council approves this, it does give me the ability to make these decisions operationally. But because it was driven by council approval, I'm going to mention it in the council meetings, part of my city manager comment saying, you've given us the ability to do this. We're going to shift this into the support services. And then that goes beyond, if we can do this, we may have room to do one more clinician. It goes beyond just, they need to service all our properties and even properties that we don't manage because then that starts playing really well with Lees and Board and what we're doing at Lees. Because then if we're able to manage more here, then Lees has capacity that they're going to gain in that in terms of what they're helping us with as well.
So do you need a motion in order to approve this or just they direct it? So?
I just didn't want to outrun your headlight. And so if you're good with this, then.
Any dissent?
See none. Seems appropriate.
So go. Oh, we are now on development updates.
I'll keep, yeah, I will. I'll just keep it brief though. Like we reported in January, we're kind of in that settling out the projects that are completing, keeping rolling on construction with Ascent and sorting out now what, which, which one is going to rise to the top to be the next one. And so you've kind of heard us allude to the, all the options that we've been considering tonight. And mixed into that is also a high priority is getting the Hearthstone and Lodge out of the 202 program. So we, Katie Pong, our development project manager, has started digging into that. We'll be bringing in on a consultant and we're going to have a call with Hudson if anybody answers the phone to get some feedback from them on process. So.
Shama found the.
Yeah, very.
I was so disappointed our head ref. We had a brand new head ref that we've only had for about four months on the city HCI side. She was amazing. And she noticed us today. She's, she's done. I don't know if it was volunteered, but it's very.
Hearing that from the Department of Ed, just representatives that I've been in contact with. I mean, leadership and racial equity. I mean, they're just, we're residing, you know. So it takes a long time to build those relationships too.
Yeah.
So every time I go to NLC, I connect with them and. It is.
So that's all I have for development. Let's move on.
Data operations, I'll keep the same report. So I have the same plan of a different report we look at each time. One thing that I added this time is you'll notice that the vacancy rates, the amounts are not included. One thing I wanted to point out is this report that's included on the backend. This is, this is one of the reports that is generated out of Yardi. And if you look at the first, the first page, which is page 39 of the PDF, for Aspen Meadows Neighborhood, you'll see the, the properties that have a move-out date in red are older. So they moved out last year. But I can only date the report from a start date and an end date. If I were to include all, like going back to, let's see, May of 2024, to capture the full vacancy of that one unit, it's going to pull in any and all move-in, move-outs and vacancy for that, for duplicate units. So it's not a great, it's not a great way to message it. So Kendra and I are going to work together to figure out a better report that we can include. Because just seeing the numbers doesn't give you the whole story either. And so we're going to work together to kind of find a better report that will, that will work for what we're trying to figure out. Because this is just a snapshot of one month or two months or whatever. It's not going to cover the one unit, its entire vacancy period unless you isolate those one units. And then you're just administratively affording to do a single report for every single one. So I included them just so you could see that we, we've had a pattern of vacant units sitting for a long time, which is no, not new news.
No.
And it's something that we're working on. You'll see in the occupancy and availability report that we are making progress on getting some of these vacants filled. Aspen Meadows Neighborhood happens to have a lot right now. We had one eviction recently. We have two project-based voucher units and three-year tax credits that are vacant. One is the eviction, two are pending an applicant, one is pending a move-in, and one is just ready to rent. I started adding a little bit more nuance and information because I think it tells a better story, gives you more information on what's happening at the property level. Another one that's had a lot of vacants, Fall River and Spring Creek. We've got Fall River working to fill more. I think at one point there were seven. We had a lot of deaths at Fall River and Spring Creek starting in November. A lot of them. I think like five. And we've had about three or four at the Hearthstone and Lodge recently. One last night.
Not the last month though?
No, over the course, like, starts in the fall.
You said the deaths?
Yes, ten and deaths.
From natural?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, no crimes.
Just. Oh, strange building.
I've never watched that show.
How do you find out about the deaths? If they're living alone and?
It depends. If they, a lot of times people will transition over to assisted living or rehab or hospice care. The family will let us know what's happening. For an unattended death in the unit, we usually find out when we smell it. Or somebody reports it.
Or by us.
Or they find out. And that, there's, you know, a protocol that we go through. We'll clean the unit, have hazmat come in and take care of that. But unfortunately, and this is something I wish there was a better way to do it, but when we have someone who passes away who has no next of kin, no emergency contact listed or no family to go to, we essentially have to evict them. We have to wait for the rent to not get paid, post a 30-day notice, wait for the 30 days to end, and then go to court and say, the tenant's passed. This is the process. There is no quicker way. So we're looking at 60 to 90 days of no rent in those.
In a few circumstances though.
If someone dies in the unit, they're the only tenant. The only way to basically reclaim the availability is to evict.
If they have no next of kin.
If they have. Okay.
So we have been lucky a few times where I've been able to find where for some reason LHA didn't have it, but I was able to do some digging. And I found, I think, a couple of times, but it's very rare. So, I mean, doing our diligence to make sure there is an emergency contact, but sometimes people just don't have any.
They're straying from their family.
Yeah.
If the family's willing to come and clean the unit, clean it out, get it prepared and hand over the keys, we usually give them like 30 days to do so. They can pay the rent longer and have more time if necessary. But it does come up quite a bit where we have someone pass and there's, there's no next of kin.
So we actually have a solution coming through soon. So you all heard about this enabling caring communities when we started it, where there wasn't anything out there that could connect people, where we have a big database in terms of who's your caregiver. We, over time, as we moved into Salesforce on the city side, Salesforce has built a platform that does this. And so what it's going to let us do is connect internally. So if somebody is a senior services client and they're in the LHA, we can type it in. Molly O'Donnell, and it goes, oh, call Brandy Queen.
Oh, okay.
Part of this is building a form in this process where we can get that information from tenants and then put it in the system. So, and again, they have to choose whether or not to do it. But it really is trying to short-circuit some of these things. And also where we have connections to caregivers and we can communicate them at different levels. So they're making a lot of progress on that. We're going to be able to pay and test it mid-year or so.
I also started putting units on notice, which has been, you know, when I look at the vacancies in Yardi, sometimes it will say five, but really there's only three. But two people have given notice that they intend to move out next month. And so at least we'll know not just ones that are actively vacant, but that we know will be vacant. Because the way that this report is done, you potentially always have three vacants, but there are always three different units. You would never know. Because we don't put the unit numbers. We can build a battery port. Hopefully that, that gives you that information.
The good things on this is in a staff meeting that I was in last week. Last week?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Quincy Lauren and the maintenance staff are doing a really good job of actually pulling that timeframe in on the unit terms. And so we're already seeing progress in terms of the work.
For your benefit, LHA went through a rough patch last fall where we were down to two to three maintenance, where we now have six.
Maintenance staff.
We have one that was on parental leave for three months. And then another that was let go. And then we had a position that we were trying to fill, an additional one that we had added, so.
So some due circumstances.
Yes. I mean, LHA has historically had terrible unit turn, turnover times.
Yes, yeah.
And is that measured on a day, a number of days between turnover or?
Days. It should be five to some. So we're working on tightening that gap and doing a better job of moving. Having the property managers and maintenance work hand-to-hand to turn units faster.
And then obviously the eviction discussion just happened doesn't have a.
Evictions in general have gotten harder as a network.
Yeah.
There are way more protections in place for tenants, which is great for the tenants, but sometimes can make it harder to get them.
Or to turn something over if they're not going for it.
The two vacants at Village on Main are project-based vouchers. And I think we have two households that are going to move into those units through the reasonable accommodation process, which will bring out two of the basic ITAC units, which will rent very fast because I think they're both 30% AMI, which are much needed. So kind of killing two birds with one stone, helping two homes better afford their housing costs while freeing up two units for other people for those lower AMI units. And then the Suites, only one.
I know.
And it might even be full by now. I don't know. This is from the sixth, so it might even have been rented by now. As far as our down units, we have the unit at the Suites, which we have a contractor in place that we're going to use. But unfortunately, during one of our first hard freezes, a pipe burst and leaked, and we had to rip more out of that unit to fix what broke. And so we're just waiting, we were waiting on the revised quote to include a couple more items. And we're just waiting on the investor to approve the spending.
Yeah, we may have to just.
We may just have to spend it.
We just may have to spend it.
It's one of those ask for forgiveness later type situations.
So the vacuum units have been cleaned up and rented within the AMI, right?
Well, the Suites is the same one from before. And then 409 was just a clean. And we're just waiting on the report to clear that unit.
The new company that you used, do you like it? The one that just cleaned and did not take everything out of the studs?
Yes, we do like them. We had an issue with the industrial hygienist company recently. So we're now getting bids for a couple of, that, those, there's like very few in the state. So we're now getting bids for a couple of, that, those, there's like very few in the state. There's maybe less than 10. So there's a company out of Evergreen that I got a quote from, and we're waiting for one from, I think, Alora. But Recycles had some turnover, and we haven't, I personally have been a little frustrated with some of the, you know, timeliness of getting things done. And then Lauren and Quincy and everyone else waiting to turn, and so.
And that ties into a recent change at the state level for project-based vouchers, whether state-funded or federal-funded. The state is going to be looking and scrutinizing the vacancies. If it's vacant for 60 days, then they're going to start asking a lot of questions. And you better have a plan to fill that vacancy in the next 60 days, or they could potentially remove the unit from the half contract, and you lose the subsidy. Obviously, in extreme circumstances like a meth rebuild, you would have more leniency, but there will be no more just vacant PBB sitting there because it's a waste of their subsidy.
Yeah.
So we have to pay a little bit more attention to that.
We may have to consider, some of the work that police is doing, again, volume. Are we going to do just hire an industrial hygienist?
Well, the meth task force that was created in the county is working on an RFP for that very purpose, to pay an industrial hygienist in-house that would work at a reduced rate for housing authorities and landlords in the area and look at how we can reduce the testing costs, the remediation costs. And I think they have a larger aspirational goal going to the state trying to get money for meth-resistant materials, which would be nice if somebody could create meth-resistant materials development. That's, that's really the solution, because they're going to do it. That's all I have? Oh, property updates. We, I don't have much to say about the specific properties. They're kind of doing their thing, not a lot going on. Sarah will talk about the Fall River Spring's Week self-reception project that's been kind of ongoing. But we, we have had some staff turnover on the property management side. We've had three people resign in the last, and a half, two months? So just the usual force-up business turnover and nothing, nothing more exciting.
Village on Main, I saw the article.
Oh, the elevator, yes.
It was actually fixed the day that it was posted.
Yes.
Okay. Of course.
Yes. And so the article was not bad, and it was 90% of what I told them, which is great. It was a shame that it went down. You know, it's, it's, it's a capital improvement cost that was weighted in the redevelopment, and it was one of the more reliable elevators at the time. That's always an analysis you have to do. You're going to do a resindication, what you spent your money on. So it was unfortunate, but we took every measure possible. It was painstaking and expensive. Put every tenant up in a hotel who wanted to be in one and tried to minimize their travel and down the stairs as much as possible. And, you know, it could have been worse. We could have had all 50-something households on the second and third floor of a hotel. So.
Yeah, that would have been really worse.
Yeah. But they, they hung in there.
And they only have the one elevator that's just one.
The one, so, okay. Yeah. Which, in the future, when we build more senior housing, we will put into. I will not settle for anything. I'll send two elevators in senior housing.
You see those cool elevators that are basically a pneumatic tube that's.
Yeah.
That would terrify me specifically.
They're very cool, but they don't go like.
Get stuck!
They claustrophobic. I don't mean like elevators.
Not like you drive in Vegas where you. No, they go slow, but they're cool.
Whoa.
Okay.
Isn't it hyper?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we are now at fourth quarter account receivables.
So this usually is how it kind of goes. One month, one quarter, you'll see evictions of really large balances and past tenant balances work through the process of our bad debt. And then in the next quarter, we're writing those balances off and we start from scratch again. So that's kind of what you're seeing there with the $74,000 in September. And then by October, we're writing all of those off and sending them to collections. And we're down to $48,000. Three of the properties, Aspen Meadows Neighborhood, the suites and Village, they had some anomalies happening. Like, we had several of the suites that got filled in December through MHP. And a lot of the times, MHP's voucher amounts don't come in until two months later. So we'll see high balances until they actually issue payment to us. So that's a situation. We'll have evictions. AMN had an eviction, a PBB voucher holder that moved in and never paid rent. So they go through the eviction, and then we go through the process of writing off their balance and sending it over to collections. And then the last one, which is Village on Main. Village on Main had some, some issues where tenants weren't being notified that they had balances due. And there was anomalies because we also had PBB vouchers being added in December that also needed to be paid by LHA. And so there's always a lag of when those payments occur. So that's why they have a high balance as well. Do you guys have any questions on that report?
I'm curious, when you send it to collections, why is the percentage that the collections organization gets to be? What is your return?
I think it's 75-25%, but.
They've never collected anything?
They've never collected anything.
Oh, today.
The problem is, is our population, they just usually can't find them.
Yep, they disappear.
They disappear, and they can't find them. So I don't know if we need to try a collection agency. I don't know if it's something we need to decide. Because there's a lot of administrative work sending it over to collections. If there's no money we're ever seeing from this, is that even worth the time and the effort? I know the property managers try to get a repayment plan, but a lot of the people that are leaving are evicted, disgruntled, deceased. You know, so in those situations, it's just not possible.
Are there any other questions on the receivables? How about the financials?
Yeah, so the financials are really kind of going to display a lot of what Lauren was saying. Our biggest tackle is the vacancy dollars and how we went over budget almost on every single property except for the Hearthstone and the Lodge. The Hearthstone and the Lodge have a very long waiting list, and those seem to be very easy to fill as opposed to our other ones that have 60% units or 50% units. Some of those are very difficult to fill once they become vacant, when somebody can't afford those rents. We also, I also highlighted.
Sorry, what's the, what is your opinion as like the reason for those, the vast difference in these to fill?
So, so each property has a number of units, and each unit is designated in certain AMI. So you, the 30% AMI units are easily filled, yeah. But 60%, and then we have to, as an organization, say, can we get somebody in at 50%? And do we need to make that work or continue with the vacancy losses that it is?
And then 202s function very much like the voucher. So it's a much deeper subsidy than even just a 30% Lytec unit. Like, a 30% one-bedroom is $700-ish dollars a month. And someone moving into a 202 property is only going to keep 30% of their, towards the rent, and then help you with the rest. So those are very sought after.
And that's separate from the voucher program?
Correct. That's the 202 program throughout, which we're trying to get out of.
For a different reason?
Yeah.
Because you don't manage your revenue coming into the property. You basically go, here's what I need, and give it to you. So they don't find certain things.
They don't give it to you?
They don't give it to you, and they don't find certain things you need to do. But you have to be careful on this, is so historically, when we came in and we started looking at this, Village on Main is probably, the biggest probably had, they were keeping it occupied. But what they were doing is that if it was a 60% AMI unit, in order to keep their occupancy numbers up, they may put someone in who only qualifies at 40% AMI. So what happened was is it started creating a financial strain on that particular property because they weren't ensuring that the margins were close enough. And, and so you've got to be very careful with your financials on each one of these properties when you make a decision to say, you don't want to keep it vacant or you don't want to fill it. Because if you do that to every unit in the property, then you financially won't make a budget. So that's why every time this comes up, it's a conversation. And you're looking at the property as a whole to determine what you have in the property to make the decision of, yeah, we can lower this from a 60 to 50, or 60 to 55. And you can't do it, you can't do it across all units.
Some of the other anomalies are just the bad debt expenses that happen. We did this year, decided to budget for those. So any amount that we budgeted as a, as a revenue, we automatically budgeted as paid right on. So that will have those numbers as well. And then, you know, the law, the Hearthstone actually had a lot of appliance replacements. And that's what we're tend to, we're finding out, is as these properties age.
Yes.
We're going to see larger costs. And we try to keep it within the budget without having to tackle the reserves because, you know, we want to tackle, use those reserves for higher costs that we know are coming down the pipeline for repair and stuff like that. So if we can keep it within the budget, we can. It's kind of a monitoring process throughout the entire year. This, you'll also see a lot of what happens with Lytec properties is they put loans in the property with really high interest rates so they can have losses on the property. So in December, what you'll see is large costs occur for both depreciation and interest. We don't do those on a monthly basis because we want to make sure we're monitoring the budgets. But you'll see that on these, on these financials. And these are only property financials because that's all we've completed so far. In the next month, you'll see LHA financials over, but these are just the property ones.
Any questions on the financials?
Okay, let's move on to B O Y vouchers.
That is the, the.
End of year.
Yeah, do you know what that is? It's kind of tiny.
That's it?
Yeah. Yeah. So this is kind of an exercise that actually HUD had us do when we went through the shortfall process, and I kind of liked their template. What this will do is the.
Oh, this, is this the new one?
It's the new one, yeah.
No, this is a six by nine.
Yeah. So the top section will show what amounts came into us. So what HUD issued for payment. And then we monitor exactly how many vouchers and what we pay every single month. And we report this on a monthly basis to HUD. And this keeps us kind of, and lets us know what our restricted net position is. So all of those negatives is we were underfunded. And by the end of the year, we were underfunded because we hadn't got all of our reserves. So HUD still owes us $78,910 from our reserve balance. But it could be worse. The negatives could be larger. But they try to have us, we send it every month. They'll give us extra money. They'll reevaluate our vouchers along with our admin and give us additional funding. And I'll kind of go with the two-year tool the next time so that you can get a foot on what that is. It's basically a tool that HUD gives you so you can monitor what your vouchers are going to look like in two years. So it does kind of an evaluation of what they're seeing in this current month, and it does an evaluation to say, okay, your, your per voucher amount is this. We're going to increase that by 5% each month to give you a gauge of, you know, are you going to be in shortfall, are you in no? And how many vouchers do you have coming in? What PBB vouchers do you have yet to, to fill, and so forth? So it's a big, massive spreadsheet with a lot of macros, but the city of Longmont, it's pretty, stuff doesn't work. So it becomes very complicated, but that's kind of where we're at. And in the top corner, if you scroll up a little. In the top corner, it will show you what our UMA's are. So we actually have 517 vouchers because we have five vouchers that were given a little while back. And then the UMA's, like, what, what we could go up to in an annual. So we could have had $6,204 voucher payments that have gone out if you were at the 517. But we only had $5,006. So that's our annual vouchers that went out for the entire year. And then it says, are you over leased? So it doesn't sort of, it shows on the side. And so we'll start our restricted net position with HUD in 2025 with the negative $78,000. And it's the same process on the admin side, too. So the admin has its own path. And we actually have quite a bit of admin that wasn't used in past years. We're kind of holding on to that because that's also another path that HUD will take to say, if you guys have a lot of admin, you may need to use that. Tutorial voucher payments.
Can I make, make a suggestion that someone can send all of the AFNAMs to Matthew so he can? Because it's hard. There are a lot of AFNAMs and.
Send you out the whole, I said.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Is the EMS UNRP?
Yeah. Not your management system?
So you mentioned it's the 78-9 number that is, HUD still has that technically owes law on?
Yes, yes.
What is the percentage likelihood that we expect to see that?
Well, I emailed HUD and I have not heard back. So it's, 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 when you get into the reserve piece of it, so the regular amount, they'll automatically give you on a monthly basis. But when you reach into your reserves, you have to request it. You have to say, I'm in my reserves. I need to request.
So that involves personnel being available on the other side to be able to provide that?
Correct, exactly.
Can we send HUD to collections?
So. He hasn't responded to me on that particular question.
That would be very helpful for you.
We started at the negatives, though. Is that, am I reading this correctly? The beginning equity was $57,000.
We were 35, 35,000 in the last one.
Oh, well, in January, about December, 57.
No, 78.
I have a misline. I don't wish to.
Disgusting.
78.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, so this is another piece we went through. When we went through the shortfall funding, they give you an analysis and they say, is there dollars that you have added into your amount, your RMP, that are affected in prior years? So we had some, we, it gets really tricky. In the last year, we had to figure out how to report our fraud recovery because technically, on the accounting side, you recognize fraud when it's recognized. So if we recognize that somebody owes us $35,000, you're supposed to put $35,000 on the book, which changes your restricted net position. It increases it, right? Says you just got $35,000, $35,000, but we didn't. Technically, we, we only got like $200 in that month. So we had to change the way we do our allowance for doubtful accounts with this particular piece. So if you have $35,000 now that's owed, you have $35,000 of allowance of doubtful accounts until it comes in. So in prior years, we had reported revenue from fraud recovery that they were saying we had to back out because technically we didn't receive it yet. So they had us do this whole exercise, and Harold had to certify the number that we came up to when they evaluated. came up to. And they reviewed my findings and they came back and said, here's what you need to do. We had to change the amount and adjust it. So the auditors will be made aware of this as well. But that's, that's why that is at 35. Because we weren't tech, we were at 287 with the additional revenue that was reported. Because of GAAP guidance, you have to report this. And we didn't know we could do this anomaly. I contacted a consultant that you can do the full amount as an allowance for doubtful accounts until it's actually received.
Well, it looks like in May, they caught up, yeah?
They did, yeah. May was probably about.
Don't we expect that in May again?
Well, May might have been when we started reaching out to the shortfall team and asking for reserves. So that was probably the trigger for the first reserve payment. And they made you do the two-year tool. They make you submit some documentation to them to get reserves. And then, and then they found, they funded pretty quickly. So that's probably what occurred there. But then it just went down. And then you can also see, there's, there's even anomalies as they go along that they, they're raising the amount based on what I submit in the voucher management system on a monthly basis.
So they're anticipating?
They're anticipating it or they're seeing it. So they're, they're adjusting the balance. I mean, we get emails monthly showing what the new calculation is and what we'll be receiving, but we never could get. I'm hoping this year it won't be as bad because now our fair market rent is lowered. Now technically, what that means is we can't, for people that were already at the 2024 fair market rent, we can't lower that for them because they have to be given a year's notice to be able to adjust and accommodate for rent increases that they would have to pay for. So anybody new coming in, a new voucher coming in, if it's a new PBB, you can lower that amount to the new, but you can't adjust the people that are already at that top level.
So the short story is, if you, I think governmental funding accounting is my name.
Yes, it is.
The HUD process came in and said, hold my beer.
Sure did.
Yeah. Were you going to say?
No, it's just, it's like they took their job and pushed it down. Instead of just saying, here's the number of vouchers. They said like, we'll do my math. That's kind of how we have to do our own taxes, even though the, the other one has basically got the data with a few exceptions.
Return free, but.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not a satisfied customer, so I want my money back.
Okay, so there's no more discussion of the, in the year vouchers, on the health and safety updates.
All right. So as of this last month, seriously, all properties have zero calls for service minus Suites, seven calls there, four welfare checks, which is very, very good. Two calls at AMN. Four of those were welfare checks and three of them were four units checking, just routine checks with residents. So that's, those numbers are included with the data. Village on Main had four and just one welfare check and everything else was zero. A few updates on my end. Our fire marshal is going to, in, this is March, sorry, had a thing. She's going to go in March to Village on Main to talk to the residents about evacuations. They're really, those residents really want, we have such, we have many new residents there and several of the existing really want folks to be able to hear her speak about evac specifically. And I have some questions that one of our residents is basically going to be able to give me, to give to Michelle. So it's more directed to them. One of our core paramedics is going to be going into our senior properties for the health prevention education. He wants to, Omar, I don't know if you know him, he wants to go in and talk about fall risk prevention and some other community health programs that are available. So that'll be great. He's going to be doing that in April at Coffee Conversations. Our cameras were provisioned on February 11th in Washington. And I'm still waiting for a delivery date. Very soon, I hope. We have a plan mapped out for that as far as install. So stay tuned. Lauren and I, with the meth detector going into Ascent, we've talked about the SOPs for them and the updated addendum. We're currently working on that. We should have it finalized by, by this time next month. We need to have Tim look at a few things when we get it finalized. So we're just prepared for when those come in, when we do the install for the resident citizen. And as far as Fall River and Spring Creek, that cellular connection, that Nextlight was coming in, they had some equipment issues and then there was, I think, some vacations being had. But they basically started the project and then we didn't hear anything. So we revisited with them and they're coming in tomorrow. And it sounds like they might be able to do a skip floor program with some new things that they found, which will save us some money as far as that cost. So those residents will be very excited for that. And Nextlight will be coming in to do the educational piece because the smartphone thing and understanding how to connect and do that. And then understanding that they can't use their laptop or Kindle or anything else to connect it just to score their cell phone. So that's all I know.
Out of curiosity, do you ever use the Boulder County Area Agency on aging due for some of the programs that they offer?
We have not. Maybe we have in the past. I'm not sure.
I think we have in the past, but we can reengage. That might have been focused through Lisa back at the time.
Yeah.
On that, and, 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 or, or, two, three, four months ago.
Everything's in there funding too. Everything's reduced.
Okay.
We are at the end, we're Commissioner. Everything else is reduced.
Thanks for tolerating all the questions. And we have our Chinese schedule for a week after our city council meeting. So we're, diving somewhere together. Thank you.
So I am going to say that I had a meeting, I already told Carol about this, with Shaquille Delong. And he is very interested, of course, as always, in that middle income. But he's also interested in having different types of housing. And told me that he was working with LHA on some little, yeah, I gotta see that look. Untable housing and perhaps using funding through LHA. I don't know how. But I did ask Carol and she said, no, my whole point is that if he contacts any of you, that was the conversation. So.
So it hasn't happened? We do not have?
He has not contacted LHA that I know of.
Not LHA. The only thing I talked to him about was ADU plans. But there's complexities with the ADU plans because they were funding out of the Affordable Housing Fund. And I think they want to take the ADU plans that have an architect or someone up there and get them given to people. But because we use Affordable Housing Fund, this is more the city side, they, they would have to do some kind of restrictive based on the funding sources you used to pay for the creation of that. But it was merely, I'll talk to you about this.
Okay. So, yeah. So he assumed that that was working with LHA?
It's not LHA. It's actually, but again, there's funding accounting complexities.
Maybe he thought he was meeting with the innerment segment, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
He thinks he's still working with you. Oh, so that's all I know.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Well, we, you go ahead.
I thought you were talking exactly.
Oh, listen here. I move, you're, you want a second there? He wasn't the one that said it.
Did we adjourn by Commissioner Corse? Did by Commissioner Popkin? All those in favor?